Hi Peter.
Hello Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. Just spent the day climbing the mountains up the traps there in the Schwanggum.
Oh.
We make it to the meeting. But I did get your message that you're not going to be in tomorrow, which is the day I was hoping to stop by. But let's go for Monday, I'll just have to leave work.
Alright, let me know. Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to take some time next week, but let me know, we'll figure it out. You know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have, I have a pile for you, so prepare to spend a little bit of time with me.
No problem. It's just our servings, that's funny, you know, I haven't been on this side of town in a couple of weeks, so.
No, I totally understand. And after the meeting, I'm gonna send over the library stuff, so they have it and it's done.
Right, uh huh, uh huh.
As long as everything goes well during the meeting.
Well, I saw you wrote up the letter to the library, and it looks great, so we'll just pass it on to them.
Yep. Should be good. I hope you can stay awake.
It's my feet that hurt, it's a 60 degrees grade till you get to the base of the, of what they call the traps, that's vertically straight up for a couple hundred feet. But it's all rock and just really.
Hard terrain. How many miles did you do? Hi Laurel.
Hey there, he thinks he's 20 years old, you know.
We all do in the moment.
That's it.
So how many miles did you do?
Well, when you climb mountains like that, it's not so much a miles, it's in feet. To go 100, to go 100 linear feet, you go up so high, it's just a struggle. It's a real struggle.
Right.
Then you have to set equipment up, and you're on a 60 degree slope, you can barely stand up, you know, you gotta get the equipment set up.
Gotcha.
I did see that the governor has, has extended the.
Yes, so we're good for the next two meetings, yep.
For another month, I guess, about.
Yeah, September, yeah, the second one in September, I think we'll have to figure out, but yeah. But hey, we'll take it as we can get it, right?
Yeah, I bet. I bet.
Um, who knows what the PB will say, but I think the lot line revision for JFH development, we might be able to similar do to the Berg one that we did, because it's really just, did you look at the plans? There's no transfer of land, they're just moving the line.
Well, I, I saw you said that, but they're moving the line across the two properties, so one property's giving a piece to the other, and the other's giving a piece to the other.
I just, what the, what the surveyor told me. And Walt, Walt will be here, so you can ask him, but anyway, but my thought, as your administrative assistant was, we might be able to handle it like we did the Berg, the, the last one we did, lot line.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know why they want to do this lot line revision, but.
He's selling it. There's something with the house placement. It's Walt Heenan.
But it seems so minor, I don't see that.
Okay. Just wanted you to know where my thoughts were going.
Yeah, um. Not quite sure, on a lot line revision, like we did with Berg, would be the same language.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's minor in scope.
We'll see how it goes, but my wheels were, I know, I have a subdivision that I'm gonna give you, but we'll definitely need a public hearing for that one, so I was like, let's skate through what we can and. Hi Connor.
Hello, hello.
Hey Connor.
Hello, that sounds like Peter.
It is.
Okay, very good. Please forgive me, I had to make something to eat real quick.
Okay.
I'm gonna mute, I'm gonna mute myself, so you don't hear obnoxious chewing.
Okay, thanks. Hi Judy.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm okay. I'm frustrated with the, the way that the mapping program installed on my new computer, and they're telling me, I'm gonna have to pay for tech support to get anybody to explain it to me. So I may have to call Jerry Washington, which I dread, since I don't use it the way he uses it. However.
It might have to be your option.
It might have to be your option.
Yeah, well. Hello.
Hi John.
Hey John.
Get myself down here a little bit. Connor's eating dinner.
He is.
I just ate. I have.
He muted himself, so we didn't have to hear him chew, as we watch him right now.
Hey, um, I need to ask you something Melissa.
Sure.
Is Ashley going to let me share the screen if people want to see the map?
I believe it can automatically do it, right Ash?
Well, it has to be set up to do it, but let me see if it does it.
It's automatically set up to do it for every meeting.
Look at that.
Okay, good. Um, then what I ought to do is make, yes, I've got it up, okay. Yep.
Thank you Judy.
And I mapped everything.
Oh good, that's what I figured too, I didn't know if you needed more.
Well, you know, it is, it's only two or three cases, and, but they were new, so I had to find them, and it's not giving me the attribute table in the way that I'm used to getting it. And the type sizes all over the map, and I can't figure out any way to change it. So I'm gonna have to go on to the user forum and ask the wise ones who use this as a business to explain some of these controls to me, because I can't find anything that adjusts the fonts.
Good luck.
Yep. But I have what I have, and I have the orthographic photographs for these cases. The reason, by the way, that I was not able to get it to move over to my new computer, without crashing the new computer, was that I was trying to install it with all of those orthographics in it, and it was too big. And after a lot of time online with tech support, using up all of my credit for that.
Right, alright.
It's working, and this is a very fast little machine with a nice screen.
Hi Brent and Wendy.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Melissa, how are you?
Hi Melissa.
Hi Melissa.
I'm good, thank you.
They'll let you know when they're ready, so if you just mute yourself until you hear us ask for you, that would be great.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I'm pulling up the agenda. Too many devices. I'm looking at documents on the iPad. Hello Jeffrey Collins. Hello Brian.
Hello everyone, how you doing?
Hi Jeffrey.
Hey.
Hi Brian.
Hi Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Well, thank you. Very good to see you John, good to see you. It's a nice tree in the background you have there.
Yeah.
We like his scenery.
Well, I'm, I'm at my sister-in-law's house in Sorgdies.
As long as you've got good wifi John.
She has good wifi, she does.
Sounds good.
Hi Peter.
Hi.
Counting down, 60 seconds to go. I didn't know that, that Bill had a sense of humor.
He made me laugh, I laughed when I.
The governor, I guess.
I must have missed something, what was it?
He said.
They, they extended the, the meeting, Zoom meetings capability for another month.
Because, because the planning board was threatening to boycott.
Well, the governor did that, this morning.
I know, because, because, but Bill said it was because the Woodstock Planning Board threatened to boycott.
I bet, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
It made me laugh.
It's seven o'clock, and we do have a quorum, so I'd like to call the order, the Woodstock Planning Board meeting, Zoom meeting of August 6, 2020. Do you have any updates to the agenda Melissa?
Nope.
Okay. You do have on here the minutes for February 20th?
Yes.
I assume we can just all pass that and accept them?
Motion to pass the minute, to approve the minutes.
Stay, I wasn't there.
Somebody's second.
Second.
Thanks Brian.
All in favor?
Uh, hey Peter, hey Peter, if I could interrupt for really quick, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, I've been having a lot of, of projects at home that required a lot of attention. I'm wondering if at the end of the meeting, I could very briefly poll the board on a couple things to do with the zoning revision committee, it shouldn't take very long.
Sure, no problem.
Right, wonderful, that's it.
Great. Okay, so the first thing we have is a memorandum from Ellen, the CEO, regarding the David Green SUP 17-0469. And as you know, he's trying to do a boarding house, has been for some years before us, and the last issue was that his parking didn't meet the standards, and then he went to the CEO, I mean to the ZBA to get variance for that, and they denied it. So he has had the engineers and surveyors draw up a parking lot arrangement, and Ellen is anxious to get this thing done, because it's been going on forever. And so they submitted a, a drawing of the proposed parking, and as Melissa said, she's having trouble getting these plans on a, a way that we can see the whole plan easily.
I can put it up.
Okay, because I only got a piece of it.
Oh, I sent an email with an actual piece that he did send, Judy, you got that?
I got it, and I can, I can go get it.
Well.
Unless Peter says no.
Tell me what you want to do Peter.
Well, I, I, the issue is that we would, as a board, because what it is that David Green wants to make sure, he says it's gonna cost like 30,000 to do this, and he wants to make sure that the planning board is perfectly okay with the, with the proposed drawings. And to do that, we really need to go through the code to make sure that all the distances between the parking spaces is correct, that we have the right amount of parking spaces, and that anything else to do with the parking code is, is included. Now, I don't know if we can do it on this map, or not.
Well, I can, looking at this map, me, it was me and Paul Schultes Jr. that went over there to do the site visit on this, we actually went out there with a tape measure, and Matt Riddikoff was there as well. I mean, if you guys want to send this back and have Matt review it, I mean, he has a lot of familiarity with this as well, but I can say.
I don't think there's any escrow.
Well, that's the thing, and I was gonna say, we've been, we've been working on this for a long time, and here's what I will say. While I don't necessarily, I don't have, you know, I'm looking at it on an iPad, so I can't really gauge the scale so well, but the, the layout that's there now is what we discussed, I believe it was this time in the winter of last year, or the year before even. Because if you look at that shaded area with the, with the slash marks, existing gravel parking to be reclaimed, yes. That is where he was parking his cars before. That's the area that was in question, and the whole discussion was to move it back approximately, I think it was 50 feet roughly. And if you turn your attention to the very edge of it, where it meets the dead end, there's a little bit of a scale there, I believe that indicates 14.7 feet. And if we multiply that across the divide, the hash mark divide, I think we're coming out well over 50. It seems to fall right in line with the back of the house, so for whatever that's worth, this plan looks like what was discussed with Matt and Ellen and Paul Schultes Jr.
I can flip it around, but I would have to do some fiddling, and I don't know if it's worth the time.
No, 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 it's fine, I, I could say.
I mean, the only thing we have to make sure is that the spaces are the right dimensions for the cars. And I don't have the code in front of me, but each lot, each car space requires so many square feet. And then, of course, um, I don't know, Connor, was there any lighting involved for the parking area that, that needed to be done?
Um, well, I think that would be a code thing, if it was required. I don't know, I don't remember us discussing that outside of the lighting that was in the entryway, because I don't think the lighting that was in his front entryway was to code at the time.
He's listing, he's listing a motion detector, 90 watt flush mount floodlight, but I don't quite see where it is on the drawing.
Yeah, I remember the discussion of that. I just want to make sure if we approve this, this plan, that it is absolutely correct, because I don't want to go back and say you need another spacer.
Of course.
Do, do you want me to get him to come in front of you guys again? And then you guys have time to look at the plan more detailed, figure it out, and I can schedule him to come back?
Um, as, go ahead John.
Well, has anyone verified that the plan configures with the actual on-ground situation?
Yeah, I don't know.
Ellen out there, and, or Butch, and said, okay, yeah, this is what was as built.
Right, but he, he hasn't built this yet, he, he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wants us to approve it, because he says it's gonna cost 30 grand to do it, so he wants us to approve this plan. And it sure looks right, I, I just can't tell you by, without scaling it, or, or knowing that the dimensions are correct.
Do you know Pretorius and Conrad? I mean, is their work, is their work dependable? Because they prepared the drawing.
I would think, I would think if the engineer signs it off, that it's correct.
Yes. Looks like it. I mean, I don't see a signature, but it's got their, got their stuff on it.
Oh, and, and just so, I, I, for whatever it's worth, I have, I don't know if y'all can see this, but I have this little six inch, and this little six inch ruler here, and I did just do a scale measurement from there to there, and we are, and if everything's right, he does have the correct spacing there. I do agree with Judy, though I don't see any indication of that motion detecting light, but if Pretorius and Conrad did this, I would imagine it's, it's to code. We're looking at about, right here.
I think there's another question, though. If I understand some document that I got recently, and I don't remember which one it was, he's got people living in houses that are not approved for residences, lots of them. So there is still that issue.
Well, I don't think we can, you know, I don't know that we can really vote to do about that, because me and Ellen, I don't know, I don't remember if Paul was part of this, but me and Ellen went, whenever it was, it was like the dead of winter, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, and we went into those structures, and we looked inside them to tell if they could, you know, if they had the makings of dwellings, and to be honest, it's like, yeah, you could live in these things, but they didn't have kitchens, they didn't have.
I guess the information was in a letter from a neighbor, wasn't it?
Alright, hang on. So what I got was basically, he will be coming back to us. This is, this memo that Ellen wrote is just for the driveway.
Yeah.
He's gonna need to come back in front of the planning board for the various other things regarding the boarding house. He just doesn't want to spend the $30,000 on the driveway, if he's gonna come up in front of you when it's gonna be new.
Well.
Makes sense?
I get that, yeah, I get that.
I mean, the letter from Ellen, the CEO, has seen this and approves it, and basically wants us to, to get this going, because it's, it's, he's operating incorrectly now, and she wants to fix it, so.
I see the floodlights. They're here. They're not lighting the parking.
You're zooming.
They're lighting the driveway.
Can you, can you leave that real quick? Leave, don't, don't zoom on it anymore, I just want to take a quick measurement.
There may be one here too, unless you're a vet. Yeah, it looks like maybe two of them are over here, on the front of the structures. And it's got another kind of, I won't touch that, but I'll look at it on my iPad, it's got another kind of light indicated.
Well, I'm good with.
This detector flush mount shielded light. No, I can't tell if it's the same thing.
Nine.
The little bugs don't look the same.
Well, let's approve this parking lot plan, and then if he has to come back before us for other things, he does, but I, I think Ellen wants us to get this parking going.
Just out of curiosity, do we know what the legal width for a parking space is, supposed to be?
I can't remember offhand.
Nine feet, I believe Peter. Nine or 10, yeah.
Alright, well, 1.07, let me see, 16 divided by 18.7 times.
Yeah? Side note, when you share the screen, I lose all control of admitting people. So if, I know we're utilizing this, but as soon as we're done, can you just X it out?
No, I can stop share.
I, you're super helpful.
As far, as far as I can tell at this moment, these are to scale, these are, if, if my scale is correct, using that hash mark over there, these are over nine feet wide.
Excellent.
Alright, um.
Let's move it.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead Stuart.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for being two minutes late to the meeting, but is this matter on our agenda for any action tonight? And if it's not, or is it appropriate for us to do any action on this matter, without notifying the public before the meeting, that it's on our agenda?
It was on our agenda.
There's been a public following this application, and I wouldn't want there to be any blowback to us if we act on something that wasn't listed on the agenda for action.
Good point. Well, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and, and finalize this thing, so that we can.
Do you want me to have David Green come? I mean, I, I, when I spoke to him, I didn't think it was necessary this time go around, but if we're gonna actually put him on the agenda and take him out of communication, then he should have the right to come. So it's up to you guys.
I, I think, that's right, we, we should put it on the agenda, so it's a public, it's in the public domain. There are issues, people, neighbors have issues, they have a right to see what's going on.
Okay, I'll schedule him, and I'll, I'll invite him to come.
Okay, great, great.
And you can let people in, I, I stopped the screen share.
Thank you so much Judy, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, next on the agenda is Wendy Klein and Robert, and Brent Robson, which is SUP 20-0577. It's a sketch plan review of a special use permit application for multiple dwellings of three living units in the R5 zoning district, located at 1277 Wittenberg Road in Mount Tremper. And before I have Brent present his case, I just want to make sure the board understands this is not a short-term rental, and this is a permitted activity in this zone, and it's encouraged, greatly encouraged by the comprehensive plan, because we need more dwelling units. The state says we're about 360 short in this town. So Brent, would you like to present your case to the board?
Yes, I would. Thank you, this is, this is the first time we've ever done this, so, so I hope we're following correct protocol, but I've, I've kind of prepared some things to, to show you, and, and hoping that first we could sort of read some statements that would give you a history of, of our property and who we are. So I'll start with that, and then we can look at some pictures and so on. Just to introduce ourselves, Wendy makes masks and operates a small studio showroom on, on Tinker Street. And, and I work part-time for a software company, but I'm also a writer and a small publisher. And I'm involved in a local literary scene, which is where I have met Judy in the past. And so we've had strong ties to the Woodstock arts community since the early 90s. We bought our home in 1999, and we've made a lot of improvements to the property. In late 2002, we built a studio building on our property that contained two rooms, each with its own entrance, and the original plans included a bathroom, a closet, and a loft space. This building was inspected and approved as an artist's studio, and the town has that certificate of occupancy on file. And at the time, finding a way to work at home while we were raising our daughter was, was essential, so Wendy used most of the space as her mask-making studio, and I used part of the back room as a writing and publishing office. And, and added benefit was that we were able to use the loft space as an extra sleeping room for family members who regularly come to visit, because our home is too small, there are three of us in a 924 square foot home. Over the years, we made improvements to the building's functionality, we built proper stairs leading to the loft, we put in hardwood flooring and a, a little kitchenette in the front room, and we also upgraded the bathroom by enlarging it and adding a shower and tub. And little by little, these changes were made, and as our daughter grew up, the building was evolving to, to meet our needs. And then in 2011, Wendy decided it was time to move her mask-making studio back into town. It was just too isolating, being out here, eight miles out of town. And she was invited to return to the studio on Tinker Street that she had inhabited for 12 years prior to building the home studio. So in 2014, with the studio building freed up of Wendy's work, the, the usage of it had shifted, and we decided to re-envision, to reflect our actual needs. So it was already divided into two, two largish rooms, each with its own separate entrance, so we decided to use that layout and added a small bathroom without a tub, and a, and a kitchenette that has a stove top only, with no oven, to accommodate tenants in, in the back room, so then we would have two, two studio apartments, one larger and one smaller, and we, and the prospect of being able to earn extra income was, was definitely a relief for us. Now, at that time, we did not apply for a building permit, because we thought it was okay to make changes inside our building, and we mistakenly assumed that a permit was not required, since we had a CVO, and we were, we weren't changing the building's footprint at all, and we actually never imagined that the zoning actually prohibited accessory apartments, so it was something of a surprise. In 2015, the, the work was completed, and we began renting. In 2015, the work was completed and we began renting the spaces. Now, the special use permit for a multifamily dwelling that we are seeking allow us to maintain these two apartments as they are and have been for five years. And this is important to our family income. We, we don't play the stock market. Over the years, we've invested all of our savings into this building and property in order to create our financial future. And like many in our community, we're reliant on this extra income we receive from rentals that takes the edge off our monthly living expenses and allows us to take proper care and maintenance of our property. And as our daughter is entering college this year, our rental income contributes to making that possible as well. We've been part of this community for nearly 30 years. We love it and we want to continue to live here and contribute positively to Woodstock. These two studio apartments really help make that possible. Allowing this special use permit would mean to us that we can keep what we've worked so hard to build and without permission to use the building as rental income, it would seem that we've thrown our hard-earned, hard-earned investment out the window. We hope that the town agrees that that long-term, full-time contributing members of the community shouldn't be pushed to make a decision, a decision about whether they can afford to stay or not. So we we really appreciate your, your consideration on this. In order to flesh out our, our application, I'd like to share my screen and, and show you some, some images. So I'm going to do that.
I have it mapped too, if we need that.
Okay, great.
That's like an orthographic photograph of the property. It shows the buildings in 2016.
Okay. Right now, you, you should be seeing my site plan slide, right?
You've got it.
Yeah, so-
The only thing yours doesn't show that mine does is the, is an approximation of the property lines. And I say approximation because the county maps are not accurate.
Well, that's, we discovered that and that's one reason we didn't show that, that image. But but this is our, you know, our hand-drawn site plan that we submitted. And with the Google Earth image that, that shows reality, not, you know, not entirely current, but, but a little while back, you know, when this shot was taken. Now, you can see that we're pretty well surrounded by by woods. And Wittenberg Road is right up here in this corner. And so we're, we're pretty well screened from the road and the, and the neighbors. So I'm not sure, I guess, should I, should I ask for questions as we go along or?
Well, I was gonna jump right in and say, cause I have, we have your, well, I don't know about everyone else. I have your submission here in the email, the referral form and it seems good. I mean, I do have a couple of basic questions, but one of the first ones is, you know, we were talking about rental units, correct, plural? And I, maybe I'm mistaken or maybe they're mirror images of each other, but I only see a floor plan for one of them.
Maybe we should show the hand-drawn images next.
Which mail did we get that had that in it, Connor?
This was dated, sorry, bear with me. Dated July 31st, August 6th, meeting content, Klein and Robinson. Robinson.
You'll find it.
Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I included any, any actual interior floor plans on the planning board application.
I guess-
We, I, I get some of what the building department had. I get the site plan.
Oh.
Cause it's submitted from the, the building zoning enforcement officer refers you to us.
Yes.
So, so then I suppose, I suppose my only question really is, you have two apartments. I assume that's delineated by the hashed line through the apartment's building. And-
Yes.
And it's fed into the same septic system as the house?
That's correct.
All right.
And I wasn't, I could show you, show those sketched floor plans, but I was all, I was just going to show some photos of the actual units. They, they are not mirror images of one another.
It's, I mean, it's not necessarily something we need. I was just curious, but you know, just to throw, just to throw it out there, Peter, I'm very happy to see, you know, some long-term rentals come before us and it's hard to want to give them too much of a scrutiny outside of what we do for these short-term rentals.
How many acres is it?
It's two and a half acres. As I understand, in our zone, it's, it's, it's a five-acre zone, so grandfathered in. We bought it in 99. I think the house originally, the original house was built in 57, I believe.
Yeah, but that's pretty big.
So to answer Connor's issue, the, the building department has inspected the buildings. They are existing. There's no more work to be done. Everything is existing. The parking, everything is there. So basically, unless anybody in the board has an issue or question, I would suggest that we assign a public hearing date.
Second that.
Melissa, can you give us a date that would work for the applicants and us?
How about September 3rd?
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
That would work for us.
Is that September or December?
September.
Okay. I misheard it.
Okay.
Would that be 7:00 PM?
Yes, I go with 7:00 PM on the Zoom meetings because it's kind of hard to gauge. So if you're here, you're good.
Okay.
That's great. And at that, at the public hearing, if need be, then Brent can show us the photos of the existing apartments and so on. For now, we're good to go for public hearing.
Oh, so, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Do we, should we stick around or should we leave the meeting? You got other stuff or?
You can go.
You're good.
Free to leave.
Thank you.
Feel free to contact me if you have any questions and I'll be in touch later.
Okay, let me, let me stop my share, my screen share and let, give you back control and then we'll go. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next on the agenda is JFH Development LLC and David Anderson and Tony Saitira. PB 20-1219, which is a sketch plan review of a lot line revision application to adjust the shared lot line for the Anderson and Cittara 2.6 acre lot and the 2.5 acre JFH Development lot. And it's in the R1.5 zoning district and it's located at 52 Patricia Lane, which is at the very end of Patricia Lane. So I don't know, again, if we can get it on the screen. I, I have, you know, a printout I did of it. It's very much like the Berg lot line revision in that that there was a straight line across the two lots and they've now made a diagonal line. And creating these two little triangles that are going back and forth. They're very small areas. I don't know if I can read the exact area, but they're tiny areas.
I can get it up. We have it in our email, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Now I can get it up.
I'm not sure the purpose for this lot line revision actually. I guess Melissa said-
Walt is here. We can take it over.
Okay.
Yeah. So-
So do you want what came in the mail?
Uh, well.
I'll get what came in the mail. It's all right.
Okay, so anyway, the, the purpose of the lot line is, you know, the original lots were just laid out by, you know, some surveyor and he just put a line on the paper that didn't really correspond to the actual topography of the lots. And I built the first house, which is Anderson and Saitara's house. And after we built it, we realized that the lot line is actually, the only place that made sense to put the house is where it is. The lot line as it exists kind of cuts off their front yard and takes away their ability to have, you know, control over what happens in front of their house. As well as the house that I'm currently building, which is JFH Development, the backyard just makes a lot more sense, again, the way the topography lays out if the line runs diagonally rather than how it was originally laid out. Now, I want to point out that the size of the parcels being exchanged are exactly the same size. So there's no, there's no land being exchanged in favor of one or the other. It's literally just, you know, turning the line.
Is this all right for people? Am I showing the right area?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you can see in the, kind of sort of the center, that triangular piece, the vertical line, I don't know if you can see where it says removed?
Yeah, this here.
Like right here. I don't know if anybody can see my cursor, but right here, it says moved. And then the diagonal line is the new line. And the area, the area to be exchanged is 0.139 acres.
Oh, there's some over here too, yeah.
That's, that's the 0.139 acres that's going to Saitara Anderson. The bottom 0.139 acres is what's going to JFH Development.
Okay. All right, so normally what we look at in a case like this is that the new lot line is not going to be too close to buildings for the setbacks, sec baths to be in place. We also want to make sure the new lot line doesn't go through a septic system or a well.
Right.
And it appears it doesn't. The only thing I'd like to point out that what, at which point that we approve this, the drawing has to, I see you have the lot line to be removed, but you don't have labeled new lot line, which would have to be on the plot.
So, so you're saying the diagonal line should be labeled new?
Labeled new lot line, correct. That's what the county wants, because this will be the county. But other than that, I don't see that it affects any neighbors or has any effect outside of these two lots. So I would ask the board, if the board thinks we could just go ahead and and waive further review as we did with the Berg case, or if members of the board think that it needs to go to a, a public hearing.
No move. No move. Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will approve this, but again, please label new lot line. And you, I haven't seen the whole drawing, but maybe Melissa can send you the information, but it needs to show what it was before and what it is after, these changes.
Okay.
In terms of bulk, what we call the bulk regulations. Okay, so it has to say which, how much acres it was before, how much after. There's a table for that.
Okay.
To be on the, on the plan.
I have that. Well, we can, we can talk and I can get it to you so you can get it on.
Great, thank you.
Are there buildings on it?
Yes.
Oh, because they don't show in the photograph. When did they go on?
Uh, so the one in the back lot was completed in January and the one in the front lot is under construction.
Okay, and this is 2016, the map that I've got, so that makes sense.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so Melissa will, will get you the information that needs to go on the final plot and then I'll review that plot with Melissa before we sign it and get it to the county.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, under unfinished business, is to make a motion to edit or approve Matt Rudikoff's cover letter with planning board additions to be attached to the memo to be forwarded to the Woodstock Public Library District. Has everybody on the board seen the letter that?
Yes.
Yeah, that, okay. Stuart, would you like to say a couple of things about it? And then if everybody's read it, then let Stuart explain.
I have one suggestion.
What's that Judy?
The second sentence of the first paragraph is absolutely choking. If it could be broken up somehow so that it's readable without a roadmap, that would be probably an advantage. I have no objections to any content.
Can you underline it or highlight it and scan it and send it to me? I'm gonna try to get that off tonight before I leave here.
I'll try to figure out a way to, to change the, I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on and on and on and-
That's not me. That was Rudikoff.
Stuart, do you want to put an input on this?
Okay, well, just to go back a bit, after our last meeting, Matt Rudikoff circulated a proposed cover letter with his draft of suggested comments for the planning board to review and approve as the planning board's comments. At the meeting last time, he, he said he was going to incorporate his suggested comments into his report, but subsequent to the meeting, I believe there was an email where he indicated that he had decided to do it as a separate cover letter. I assume in order to give us an opportunity to tweak or amend or revise what he was suggesting, since it's going to be our comments and not his. So after I got Matt's letter draft, I thought there were a couple of revisions that ought to be made, and so I sent them to Melissa and she incorporated them, I believe, into the draft that we all have now. Is that right? We're all looking at the August 7th?
Correct.
They're as revised?
Yep.
Today, for, and it's really up to the board as to whether we want to adopt the revisions. I won't be offended if anyone wants to take any out or argue against them and so on. It's, we're a board, it's a democratic board and so on. But from my own perspective as an individual board member, if you want, I could just go through the, the changes. They weren't, you know, well, without describing them. Basically, Matt had said, his first item under parking, he wanted to confirm that the hardware parking spaces are not utilized as part of the calculation of satisfying the library's parking demand requirements. I didn't have any problem with that. That's something that was told verbally to our chair and it's a good idea to get them to confirm it in writing. Matt had also added a comment referring to asking whether the library employees, if they utilize, can they utilize the lower commo lot? And whether that, their usage would impact the ability of other people in the community to use it. Would that increased demand affect the right of the general public to use that lot? I-
Do we know how many cars would be involved with, with employees?
I have no idea. I imagine through-
Jeff might could answer that. Jeff?
The most employees at one time are seven.
Seven.
There are nine total employees, but they overlap and there's only seven at the most to one time.
All of them driving separate cars?
Not that I know, I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming worst case they are.
Well, that's a substantial amount relative to the number of spaces on the library's land, so-
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, one of the thoughts that we were kicking around was, would they be willing, if needed, to order their employees to park only at the lower commo in order to let patrons you know, park? So that, that's why this comment-
Jeff has his hand up, just a second.
Just wanted to verify that I have talked with the director. It's up, it's up to the director to make that decision and she said yes. She's talked with her employees about doing that and they've, they've agreed to do that. So that's, that's been handled to that extent that we can.
Okay, so I, I basically just tweaked Matt's comment to to add the, add the patrons into the mix as well, because if you're gonna have, if you lose the hardware spaces and then there's not enough spaces on the library land, where are the people gonna go? Where are they gonna park? And Peter has said several times, well, they got lower commo there. So I think that the library has to consider not only what the impact will be if its employees park in lower commo, but what about the overflow patrons parking there? And what will that do to the rest of the community that might want to park there for other purposes? It's something that's a legitimate question and I think the library has to come to grips with it. I see that Judy has her hand up.
Hi Judy.
Yeah, do we know what the capacity of lower commo lot is and how heavily used it is?
I can't give you a number for how many parking spaces there are, but I would like to mention that the town has made a pedestrian walkway from the lower- from the lower Como down the Como Drive to a crosswalk, which took three years to get through engineering town and state, a crosswalk that goes to the other side of 212, basically in front of the police station. So that is the official walkway from lower Como to the other side of 212. And.
Problem, Peter, it's in the opposite direction. If someone parks a Como, they have to walk away from the library to cross over if they're going to be required to use that.
I, I understand that. I want to tell you, the library's been here quite a while. I used to go there before there was internet, when people actually read books and went there to get periodicals and magazines and newspapers. So, we never had a problem. But the supervisor has told me that he is willing to work with the state to see if the state is willing to arrange another crosswalk. But you have to realize that the one we have now is the one the town has the walkway on the side of the Como Drive. So you'd have to cross in front of Como Drive and then cross 212 the other way. So, but in either case, it's something that should be looked at, and I'm glad that you put it in the letter.
My feeling, Peter, is I, I think as a board, we, we should be holding the library's feet to the fire on these issues, because it's their project, they need to engage with it and not simply be passive and let the government, the other government, you know, the rest of the town government try to solve it. It's their project, they need to get creative and be engaged in this as a full partner in this.
Jeff has his hand up, Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with you, Stuart. I do believe you're correct about that, we do need to engage in it and help solve this problem. We do have modifications to the traffic report coming up to, to talk about this. We are putting forward a resolution in our next board meeting to request the town, request a, a new crosswalk in front of the library. So we are taking, we are being proactive about this, because we understand that there's an issue and we're trying to address it too.
Very good, very good.
Can I ask Jeff a question?
Judy, go ahead.
What's the condition of the bridge? Is it walkable comfortably on both sides?
The issue is, as I understand it, it's not on town property. So that the repairing of it, you're talking about the bridge that goes across the creek?
Yeah.
The covered bridge?
No, 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 no. The bridge, the bridge that goes from like the police station and the hardware store over to the library area.
It's on the, it's on the state's to-do list, but that could be long.
Is there sidewalk on both sides? I just don't remember.
Yes, there is.
There is.
Yeah.
There is.
It's not a great bridge, but as long as there's sidewalk on both sides.
That bridge is going to get replaced, for sure.
Excuse me, but the potential of covered bridge being used is probably substantial. And what is the condition, as, as Judy said, of the covered bridge?
Well, that came up when, when the, when the station was before us.
Yes.
And their parking issue, they needed more parking, and we said, well, you have the lower Como, and we discussed going across that bridge. I think the issue was that it's not on town property, and therefore the town can't repair the bridge. I think that's how it was, but I'm not.
I think I remember that too.
We looked at that too, as a path to go the other direction, through the covered bridge, through the parking lot. And we crossed, it's all on private property, so we can't even really do address that. There's nothing we can address about that.
Right, right, it was private property, I remember that was the issue, yeah.
Well, didn't Basil's give us a easement many years ago?
There was a discussion about that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, you know, where that stands. I, I don't, I'm not sure. But if everybody's read it, and if Judy's willing to kind of.
Yeah, I'll figure out some way to word it that doesn't change the meaning and gives us breathing space in the middle of that sentence.
Peter, if you want.
I'll read it and check it before I send it. Send it to you guys.
I can quickly go through the other revisions that I made, just so, if you want, people have. So there, there were additional revisions to the parking, these are suggested additions. Basically, the next one, that is, the hardware spaces are not available to the library patrons, and all spaces on the library's land are full. Where will the library patrons park? And if the answer is lower Como lot, there's a safety concern for users who will walk from lower Como west along the south side of Route 212, and then try to cross 212 at the library lane intersection to get to the library, and of course, take the reverse course to return to the cars. There's no traffic controls, crossing guards, or crosswalks there, which is a main road in and out of town. So that leads up to the question, how will the library address this concern during the day and night hours it is open? And the next comment ties together. Should the library consider requiring its employees to park at lower Como to free up parking on its land to reduce somewhat the need for patrons to park at lower? At, did I make a mistake? To park at low, free up parking as in reduce somewhat the need for patrons to park at lower Como? In other words, that would free up some spaces on their land. And then the next item, would the library consider adopting a pedestrian safety plan, which includes arranging for crossing guards at the library lane 212 intersection during appropriate hours to protect patrons crossing to or from their cars parked at lower Como? And that idea comes to me because whenever I drive over towards Mount Mary and you pass this little elementary school, and there's always during the school day, it's like an older gentleman in, in, you know, with a stop sign to, if kids are trying to cross, he'll stop the traffic. Now, I don't know if that could be done, but it's just an idea that, probably one of many ideas that people could think about, to try and protect seniors, kids, and other people who might try to cross directly across from the library rather than walking all the way down to the existing crosswalk. The next comment is, what Matt wrote confirmed that the handicap space is designed so as to be compatible with handicap and accessibility standards. And the, the next comment that Matt made, referring to the traffic import report, I didn't have any changes to that. And in paragraph two, when he talks about pedestrian safety inconvenience, I just added a sentence beyond what he wrote, to explore having protective devices such as in-street reflective sign panels that are visible to drivers at night, installed at the library lane Route 212 intersection to warn drivers that there's a pedestrian crossing. Now, I don't know if that's something that could be done with that and approved crosswalk, but it's, you know, I'm trying to stimulate the library's thinking on this to, you know, get as many ideas as they can bring to bear to try and reduce the possibility that somebody might get hit crossing the road. Paragraph three, I didn't address, and paragraph four, which has to do with the underground fuel tank, I just added an additional sentence detailing why I think this is a significant concern based solely on their submission, which shows that the existing underground tank is piping this not-to-code, and the tank could not be properly tested back in 2016 due to an issue at the intake valve. And since the library's built over principal water source, Aquifer, with a high-water table, any underground leak would pose significant environmental risk. I mean, it's obvious. The library needs to indicate how it plans to mitigate that concern. I, I don't know what they have in mind on it, but it's certainly worth commenting on and making a record so that if we ever have to look back, we can show that we pointed it out to them as a major concern. So that, that's all.
I mean, Jeffrey has his hand up.
As you know, Stuart, we have looked at that. We have a civil engineer working on coming up with a plan for that. We'll have that planned as part of the secret, it's an important issue, you're, you're right.
So those are my comments and the revisions, and the board is free to weigh in on them, plus or minus, and let's see where we go with them.
I think that all seems very reasonable. I don't see why we would omit anything.
I agree.
All right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Matt Rudikoff's cover letter with the planning board additions to be attached to the memo and sent to the library.
As revised.
I just sent it to Melissa, and basically, what I did was break that horse-choking sentence into two, and in doing so, realized that it's not entirely clear what the end of it means, but I think the change that I made makes it clear.
Well, after I send it, I'll send it to you guys, just so you have it. Jeffrey, I do plan tonight to send it, so I'm going to email you. Is that okay? Perfect.
Great, thank you.
So I would just ask Peter to just amend your, your motion to, to approve release of the letter as revised to the library board of trustees, together with a copy of Matt's report that he's already provided, because that has to be an attachment.
Just to be clear, all I did was, he, he was talking about what was in his memo and the planning board's comments, and then some conversations between the library and the planning board. And that was confusing, so I tried to make it a little less confusing. That's all I did. Second sentence of the first paragraph.
As Stuart mentioned, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And then. All in favor after the second?
Aye.
Good, good, good. Okay. Connor has a couple of things he wants to mention, and I'll let him do that right now.
Hi, so basically, we've been having some really good sessions over there at the zoning revision committee, which Jeff is a part of, if he's still, yes, he's still here, so thanks for, thanks for that. But I just wanted to bring to you guys, your guys' attention that one of the things we discussed in the past was requesting drone aerial photography of applicants who plan to do either sizable expansions, or namely, tree cutting of a certain volume. Now, we're, now I, I didn't, this specifically pertain to the scenic overlay, though. I want this to really not just be limited to that. I think there are plenty of areas in this, well, I think this whole area deserves, you know, equal consideration, though maybe we can be a little bit more considerate of that in the scenic overlay. But I wanted to just bring a couple of things to your attention. We had a good session with David Lacks, who is a local, he, he's just a local polymath who is like excellent at many different things. One of those things is, he is a professional drone operator, and I wanted to give you guys the quick rundown of what that means and how we are talking about implementing it. So in order to operate a drone, you have to be an FAA licensed pilot. So that immediately will give us a very good delineation and a good criteria of who can and cannot work on our behalf in these situations, making sure that they are licensed, and namely, insured. For, to do this kind of photography is going to be pivotal in our ability to ask it of applicants. And that's not to say the applicants couldn't find their own person to do it, but our criteria would definitely want to hold up to that standard, to say the least. The important footnotes from there was, he is able to fly, he can fly his drone, or one, I should say, one can fly their drone 400 feet elevation from wherever they are, if they're on a mountain, if they're at sea level, wherever, 400 feet straight up and within line of sight. So that is going to be more than enough to cover the tree line of any given area. And one aerial drone photograph, at least except in the case of extensive logging operations, should cover, I would think, should do it for most of the type of projects we're talking about. Now, Dave, and I'm going to get back in touch with him as soon as I can. We were discussing perhaps setting up an appointment for him to come to my house, because I actually happen to be in the scenic overlay. My house doesn't face the canopy, but you can, I think he'd be able to operate his drone in a way that he could shoot from the canopy and above my house. And we want to essentially come up with an example, template, of the kind of work we would ask him to do. And so just to draw this to a close and ask you guys what you think, basically what we had in mind was, we're talking about probably a minimum of a total of four photographs that would ultimately be requested of applicants that this would be pertinent to. One aerial photograph that shows, that, that documents prior to work the area of disturbance, and Dave would be more than capable of editing that photo so that essentially we could surround the area of disturbance with a radius and color certain areas of that, excuse me, of the circumference of the area of disturbance. And we could color certain radiuses differently if they say face the canopy or different sensitive areas, so we know, okay, this part, like of the circle, this area needs to be left alone, or we need to be more, it needs to be more scrutinously decided which trees can come down. And the second photograph would be one outward from the canopy to, to demonstrate the density of that, of the, of the coverage at the canopy. And then the same two photographs be taken again after the work is done. And that's essentially my proposal, yes. Judy?
Do we know how many acres he can get in an aerial?
I, I have it written down somewhere, but I, when, when he told me, I was, I think he said something akin to 10, eight to 10?
Wow.
Or something like that, it's like 400 feet straight up, and I was just like, yeah, that, that covers so many of the applications we talk about.
I got copies of those, because the latest flyover from the state was 2016. They didn't do one in 2019, although they're supposed to do it every three years, but they didn't, or at least they haven't put it online yet. So it would be really terrific information.
Yeah, and, and just, and of course, you know, another thing he pointed out tangentially is that the customer, the client will also get lovely photographs of their home, you know, or, which they can choose to use or not use, but that's just a happy side benefit. So just to put a pin in this, we, we're not, you know, zeroed in exactly on our language, but Jeff astutely pointed out, we don't want to necessarily, you know, pigeonhole the law by saying, we're going to request, the planning board is allowed to require drone photography. The way we're thinking about phrasing it is, the planning board has the authority to request aerial photographs of the, that are essentially a bird's eye view and a canopy shot.
Within a certain time, within a certain timeframe, because they could go to Google Earth or something, and it's obsolete.
Well, well, exactly, and, and essentially, it's going to cover three things. It's going to cover that, and, and again, I, I, we, again, we don't, we don't have it exactly down yet, but essentially, the planning board has the authority to create, to request current aerial photographs at the ti, at, at the time before and after the work is done from a licensed operator. And that, I think, would give us the breadth we need to be open-minded about how we acquire them and not just, you know, essentially create some law that caters to the drone industry, per se. Although at this moment, I do think that's the most efficient and inexpensive way to get this done.
John has his hand up, John?
Well, I just, you did mention the word inexpensive, but I would, do we have any idea what this would cost our applicant to do?
Well, that's why I wanted to see if you guys were okay with me. What I was going to do is reach out to David about coming up with this example. My guess is, you know, I'm, I'd be surprised, you know, if it was much less than $100 an hour based on his other going rates for, for what he does, which is so many things I could, I could prattle on. But the idea that, when we discussed it, as long as the weather is good, as long as the light is good, and he, he can come and do the shot, this would probably be able to be done in one, in, in an hour or less. We're talking about two photographs, four photographs over two one-hour sessions.
John?
Yeah, I know of at least two other people in town that have the FAA licenses necessary for drone operation. So I think maybe we need more than one price.
Oh, yeah, of course. I think, Dave, Dave happens to be a good friend of mine, and I just want, he's going to come and give me his price, but the, the purpose would be more for us to have a template for what we are asking for. We would totally not, the. We would totally not, the, the whole thing would go, I would assume, we want to, we would want to go out to bid just about every single time. So absolutely.
The applicant pays for it?
This would be escrowed, yeah.
Well, you know, Phoenisha's personal lawsuit justice.
Sorry. I, I don't know if we want to put this into escrow or just make it like-
You have to have it.
Planning board request them to go have this done, and we prove that they're licensed. I mean, I, I don't know. Just my thought as your admin assistant.
Melissa's got a point, because if we put this in escrow, we're in the middle of it.
Exactly.
Need to be in the middle of it.
That's true. If we, I think it might behoove us to have a sort of short role index of people that we do know and can recommend. But that being said, yes, taking us ourselves out of the middle, if, as long as we can, you know, still have, you know, enough, what's the word, enough of a overview of it to trust what is being provided for us.
Newark has a stand-up. Stuart?
Yeah, yeah. So I know that the town, and when electrical inspections have to be done in furtherance of permitted work, they have a list of specific electrical contractors that are approved by the town to go into, build homes and buildings in the town to inspect the work that's been done by other electricians and then certify to the town that it's up to code and so on. I'm wondering if there's any part of the town government that might be able to maintain a list of a limited number of, of operators that meet the qualifications and let that process be put on, say, the building department or some other aspect of the town to maintain the list, so we don't have to, you know, be on the hook for, for figuring out who, who knows how to do this and who doesn't. And then if there are complaints about somebody, it can just get knocked off the list, you know. The other, the other question I have is, to what extent is drone usage even an issue in the town at this point? There are some areas of the country where people don't want drones buzzing around over their heads for various privacy reasons or other things. So I'm just wondering whether that issue has even come up yet up here.
Well, one of the things we did discuss is that the, it would be courteous, and it's definitely something I think that's within our capabilities, to alert neighboring properties when this type of work is being done. Because when a drone flies 400 feet in the air, you know, it's not just going to be the property owner who sees it. And to make sure that they know that they are not being photographed, this is not, you know, and to give them just forewarning so it doesn't surprise them. Frankly, I, I know that there was discussion about it, but there's discussion about everything that happens in town on the forums. And I think that if they are allowed to commercially operate in this area and in this county, which we know they are, then their services should definitely be on the table for us in terms of, you know, especially for something I know I cherish a lot, which is protecting the, the visual integrity of the scenic overlay.
Well, I think that the, whoever the approved operators are should be required to sign a certification that they will only photograph the parcel or parcels that are the subject of the, of the-
Yeah.
Their application. And, you know, in this way, if we find out that they're not doing that, we kick them off.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's all. And, and so I guess that brings me, the, the thing I'd like to bring around with everything I've said tonight, I'd definitely be interested if you guys could submit any concerns or ideas. But the verbiage that we're looking at right now is circling around, the planning board has the authority to request aerial photographs of the area of disturbance from a licensed operator. And that could, and that could expand to me many things, but how we go about acquiring that, the forms that we maybe give to the applicants and, and our, and, and our, and the, and the things that we ask for in those photographs, like for example, a color-coded area of disturbance by someone like David Lacks, not necessarily David Lacks, but you, I'm just using him as an example. You know, that's all for us to discuss, and we can definitely do that. But I'd love to keep that discussion going as long as anyone will have it. And if you have any suggestions for the verbiage before I go to submit it to the board, I'm all ears. You can email me or send it to Melissa or whatever you think is appropriate.
Well, I definitely, I definitely think that we need to put more effort into the scenic overlay protection. That's definitely a good step. I, when you were mentioning the aerial photography, it came to mind that one of the jobs we ask the planning board to do is site reps when we have things going on in the scenic overlay, is to say, can you see it from anywhere else? And it seems to me that would be a good way to use that photography. If you could go to the mountain across the way and take a picture at what we're looking, what we want to look at. Because so far, we've just been doing it by saying, oh, I know I can't see it from there. But if you actually had a photograph from various points, looking at the site, it would be something really beneficial. The other point I just quickly mentioned is that, as a surveyor, we do a lot of aerial work because what we do, we have properties flown as for topography. So we actually have properties flown. And, and then in order for them to make sure that they know where everything is, we actually require stations to be set. So these are state plane stations so that the actual photographs can be correctly placed. And as far as the scenic overlay goes, again, I think that the planning board should be able to ask that the applicant that's going to build a house or driveways or swimming pools, whatever, have a licensed surveyor, give us state plane coordinates of those positions. Because then you can always go back and say, oh, here's where that was, and this is what's changed. So I think the combination of having a known point and the photograph would be very beneficial.
I wonder too if that's something based on GPS information that a drone operator could provide us. I mean, it wasn't something I thought to ask him at the time, but if you guys are okay, what I, I imagine he'd be, David would be okay with giving us a sort of sample, probably gratis. But if he does ask to charge us for this sample, I'll come back and ask permission. But if you guys have any other questions, I know that he'd be more than willing to answer them. And, and Peter, if you could email me that in, in your words, because I want to get it, you know, I want to get the vernacular right. I'd love to ask that of him when I see him again.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, it's, it's very important, and I'm glad you're working on it, because it's the same old issue we have. Will we pass a site plan, and then 10 years later, somebody else buys a property and cuts all the trees down?
Yeah.
No control. So to get a handle on that scenic overlay.
After we're done with the meeting, if you've got a minute or two, I want to ask you a question about state, you know, state plane, that kind of stuff. Because it's relevant to what I do with the maps, and I don't understand it.
Well, I think we're pretty much taken care of and everything. Does anybody else on the board have any issues? While we have everybody on the board, I'd like to mention, I think we did at the beginning of the meeting, that the governor has given us a month's grace without having to meet in the buildings together, so.
Yay.
They've been doing it a month at a time, quite regularly. Now it's out to the fourth.
Yeah.
I have, I have one issue, if I may, quickly. And Connor, I really do appreciate your bringing these issues forward, and you, I've seen you do this in the past. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could get these on the agenda prior to the meeting so we could budget time and prepare for that. Because this discussion took about almost a third of our time, and I think it's, it's interesting. But for protocol, I'd just like to be able to formalize it a little better.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'll personally apologize for that because I had-
Ten minutes.
All, all I'll say to that is, yes, it was my fault, because I had intended to bring this up at the workshop meeting, but I had an emergency that, well, I've had a month-long emergency, let's just say, that has been really just, just burning every, the time, the wallet, my candle at birth, at both ends. And I do apologize. I will make more of an effort to be more proactive about making sure that gets done. And, and I do apologize for that.
And I appreciate your enthusiasm in bringing these things, so please don't take that.
Oh, no, no.
And Brian, I, I just so you know that it was on the agenda for the workshop meeting, and Connor didn't make it, but we used that meeting with the library. But in the future, our workshop meetings should include these kind of things and not cases. We should be, workshop meetings should be just for planning. So.
Yeah.
And scenic overlay is one of the issues, so. Anybody else have any questions, or Stuart?
One question, I was muted. Do you think Mr. Lacks would be willing to come to a workshop meeting to give us, you know, 15 minutes?
It's possible, but I, if, if you like, I think, I'm not sure, but I think we may be able to provide the Zoom meeting for review that, that we had with the zoning revision committee. And, and that might be worth reviewing too. But, but yeah, especially if it's remote and we can limit his time, because he is a very busy guy, I think he'd be willing to do that. What I'll do is I'll reach out to him about the, the template example visit that we want to set and see if he would be willing to do a quick follow-up with the planning boards.
Just for clarification, Connor, you're talking about having him visit your property and do the kinds of images that you're thinking we might want for other things.
Exactly. And we'd only need to do two of them in this case, because I'm not doing any work. So essentially, he would fly up and then back down, and then he'd fly up and out, and then back and down. And that would be the end of it.
That's an existing condition shot that we would do with other, with other people.
Exactly, because the only other type of shot that I could imagine might be beneficial to us is to fly the drone up to eye level and just rotate it in a 360-degree circle to give a very, very on-the-ground view of the canopy, or not the canopy, excuse me, the area of disturbance and the density. And that also could be done, all three of those shots, I'm sure, could be done in under an hour.
I can think of another house that we could use as an example, but I don't, I would appreciate it.
No, no, we got to get permission.
Get a shotgun and try to bring the drone down.
Or a crane.
F-16 up there, next thing you know.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Can I just ask John one question, John Laval?
Yes, sir.
Why is it dark at my house, but it looks light behind you?
I have no idea. I'm in Sawgrass right now. I have no idea. It's a different time zone in Sawgrass?
Must be.
Getting dark here, too.
It's the aura that John projects.
Yeah, yeah. It's this radiant light.
Well, folks, well, we'll be a Zoom one again.
All right.
You have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Take care. Bye-bye.
And I can stay on for just a moment?
Yes, go ahead.